Good afternoon, and welcome to the June meeting of the Canfield Board of Education. We see all the people here, so we must have a busy agenda. I think we're gonna do a lot of hiring tonight, if I'm not mistaken. But before we do all that, we need to pledge allegiance to the flag, and the flag is back there in that corner.
(Applause). (Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the true republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the regime as our system.
Roll call.
Mr. Frye, President. Mr. Bova, Vice President.
Here.
Mrs. Lasich.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Tanser.
Here.
Okay, we can begin with the presentation of the minutes. As per tradition, we do not read the minutes, and I think you can understand why. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. Now, we have the Treasurers' report for the month of May from our Treasurer, our renowned Treasurer, who's won many awards.
Skip the financial report by fund unless anybody has a question. There's nothing really new on there. The appropriation report, go to the last page. After 11 months, or 92 percent of the year, we've spent and encumbered 89 percent, so we're on track with our budget, with one more month to go. Check payment register. I'd like to point out, three-quarters of the way down on Page 1, named Construction for $8,500. This was a new roof that we put on the Shields Road property, the home over there. That was all paid out of the PI fund. And, go to Page 5. Toward the bottom, fourth from the bottom, Bureau of Workers' Comp for $66,000. That was our annual workers' comp premium for everybody for the whole year. Any questions on any items? Moving on to the purchase order register. The new items you haven't seen start on Page 8. I'd like to point out, about halfway down, Parkport Grace, $57,000 for reading materials that were purchased out of the Reading Literacy Grant. And, if you go to Page 10, six items down, Do-Cut for $13,000. Bought a new Zero-Turn mower for up at Hilltop. And...
Is that permanent improvement, too?
Yes. And on Page 11, the two Dell computers for $27,000 and $24,000. Those were computers that we purchased out of the Race to the Top Grants, the Regular and the Par Grants.
Two computers.
Any questions on any purchase orders?
You don't mean two computers.
Did I say two?
You meant the two line items.
Yeah.
How many, roughly, how many computers?
I think there were 65 or so.
The entire staff of the high school, and then the computer lab, as you enter the high school to the right there, was redone.
68.
That's correct.
35, 33. And then the investment report, nothing really new on there, same investments. And, anybody has any questions on those? If there's no questions, do you need a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. For the audience, Board members, we get these in a packet, so we get to peruse all this before we get here, and it's quite involved, and Patty does do a wonderful job. Also, you would've heard that we roofed a house. We own the house up on Shields Road, piece of property there that's next to the Boys' Baseball Club. It's part of our school system, and that house is rented out every year. It needed a new roof, and I think it needed a pump, too, didn't it? A well pump?
A well pump that was replaced a month prior, yes.
Yes. We have a number of student resolutions, 131-2014 through 145-2014, and Mr. Tanser will read those.
Came from the local Board of Education, student resolutions 113-2014 through 145-2014, whereas the Canfield Boys' Tennis Team was named AAC Champions, and the Boys' Tennis Team displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability during the 2013-14 season. Whereas Ryan Khalil was named First Team All AAC in Boys' Tennis, Nick DeBick was named First Team All AAC in Boys' Tennis in a district qualifier, Will Brown was named First Team All AAC in Boys' Tennis and was a district qualifier. Whereas the Canfield Girls' High School Softball Team was named AAC Champions, the Canfield High School Softball Team was named District Finalist in order as the Girls' Softball Team displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability during the 2013-14 season. Whereas Allison Fabry was named First Team All AAC in Softball, Amelia Manetti was named First Team All AAC in Softball, Kara Rothbauer was named First Team All AAC in Softball, Ally Samarko was named First Team All AAC in Softball, and Rachel Tenkey was named First Team All AAC in Softball. Whereas the Canfield High School Boys' Baseball Team was named Sectional Champs, and the baseball team displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability throughout the 2013-14 season. And Jimmy Leone was named First Team All AAC in Baseball, Carter Rhodes, Edmund Palouy, and Alec Hyman were also named First Team All AAC in Baseball. Therefore, be it resolved that all these Canfield students be commended for their outstanding accomplishments, and that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Canfield Board of Education, and a copy be presented to them. I'd like to make a motion to accept the student resolutions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. Next item is comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
No one's signed up to speak, then? We'll move right on to...
Thank you, Mr. President. It's recommended to accept the resignation of licensed employee Joan McElroy, Hilltop, Grade 1 Teacher, effective July 1, 2014, for the purpose of retirement. That's your Exhibit 0.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resignation, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Definitely want to wish her the best, and thank her for the years servicing our community and the youngsters that came through our class every day. So, definitely, we are planning on recognizing all of our retirees again at the July Board meeting during open session, so just to let you folks know, that's coming. We have two administrative hirings here we'd like to recommend. Number 1 is John Tulio, three-year administrative contract, August 1, 2014 through July 31, 2017, assigned to Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Mike Moldavon, three-year administrative contract, August 1 of '14 through July 31 of '17, assigned to High School Principal. And Michael Flood, three-year administrative contract, August 1, '14 through July 31, '17, assigned to Middle School Assistant Principal at $75,000. That's your Exhibit 1A.
On the Superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to accept...
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Not only like to wish the best to our two returning administrators, but also like to introduce Michael at this time. Mara, would you like to introduce him, since he's gonna be working with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Michael Flood, right here. We are very excited to have him a part of our team. I'll let him introduce his beautiful family, but our entire administrative team took place in the interviews. So excited to have him join this amazing family of ours, so...
Well, thank you, thank you Board members, Superintendent. Very excited, been in administration over nine years, just pumped up for this job. My wife here, Melissa, we're high school sweethearts, still putting up with me. My son, Mike, and my daughter, Melisia. Once again, I do appreciate the opportunity. Won't let you down.
You don't expect me to. The one thing that definitely stood out with Michael, you know, walking through the door, you never know what to expect, and after an hour's worth of grilling, of intense interviews, you could tell he was a little nervous, but the entire team was receptive of what Mike was gonna bring to us for the entire school system. And the one thing that we highlighted in his explanation was accountability. Not only accountability that he has for his youngsters at home, but for himself and the staff that he supervises, and that's gonna be key as we move forward. If we truly want to be top 10 by '17 in the state of Ohio, that's the type of temperament we're gonna have to have, so, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Like to add one, just one more, something I didn't see on the resume. I did run into Mike and his family at Handel's the other night, so I think that's a plus.
That's a plus. In your opes, that'll be your first line item?
What kind of issue? Let's clarify.
I didn't have it.
Oh! That was a softball toss.
For those of you who do not know, Mara Vanfield is the principal of the middle school. She introduced Mr. Flood. And I think John Tulio back there wants to say something, even though he didn't sign up.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity, and tell you that the last seven years have been fantastic. And as I look around the room, I see a lot of new hires tonight. Just a phone call away, and I can help you in any way. Talk to your building principal, I'll be there to help you in any way that we possibly can. And I hope, I know you're going to have a fantastic career at Canfield. There's no better place to be. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Jordan's looking forward to having a little help.
Well, what do you call Patty?
A lot of help.
So John will be a little...
I understand.
Moving on with new business.
Yes, we'd like to recommend some other anxious folks in the room tonight. Cara Diana, CH Campbell, kindergarten teacher, $34,000, $12 effective 14-15 school year. That's posted 3-5-14, that's your Exhibit B. Kristen Hartshorn, again, CH Campbell, Grade 3 Teacher, 39, 1, 14, effective again, 14-15 school year, posted 5, 22 of 14, Exhibit 1C. Megan Manning, Hilltop kindergarten teacher, 40, 8, 14, effective 2014-15 school year, posted 3-5-14, Exhibit 1D. Mackenzie Thomas, Hilltop kindergarten teacher, 34, 12, effective again, 14-15 school year, posted 3-5-14, Exhibit 1E. Kelly Manning, CH Campbell Title 1 Tutor, at $16.98 per hour, 14-15 school year, posted 6, 2 of 14, Exhibit 1F. Cindy Bova, Hilltop Title 1 Tutor, $23.16 per hour, effective 14-15 school year, posted 6, 2 of 14, Exhibit 1G. And then, 2 Success by 6 Teachers at $25 per hour, Megan Manning and Cara Diana.
Don't you have one other thing to say?
That's all I got.
Cindy Bova here?
Cindy, yes, yeah.
No relative, right?
No, no relatives. I wouldn't allow you to say that.
No, we're not. My husband's Dawn Bova. He went to, he graduated with your son, though. They were in the same grad class. And my maiden name's Maldonado. I had you when I was at the...
Well, how was that experience? You're not hired.
I was, I was saying my maiden name, that's why it's a little...
Say, Maldonado, I remember you. I need to talk to you later. On the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to accept...
So moved.
Second.
Accept what?
Accept these. Do I have any discussion?
I have one question. I think this young lady is a carrot.
Yes.
Would you stand up for a minute? Perfect. See, you have the kindergarten teachers of the smallest...
Makes the kids more comfortable.
I didn't say anything about it. I didn't say anything about it. Just was talking kindergarten.
Moving right along. Roll call.
Lasich, yes. Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan, would you like to introduce him? If you don't mind, I'm gonna allow the, again, the principals to introduce the new hires, welcome everybody aboard, and, again, set the bar pretty high for you folks, and I know you'll reach it, so, we would like to introduce Building Appropriate.
At Hilltop, we have Megan Manning, who's gonna be teaching kindergarten. She's coming to us from East Liverpool, where she was MD teacher, is now moving over to kindergarten. We're glad to have her aboard. You've already met Cindy Maldonovo. She'll be a Title 1 Tutor at Hilltop, and we have Mackenzie Thomas, she's tall. She'll be teaching kindergarten also at Hilltop, and she's coming to us from West Bridge.
And over at CH Campbell, we have 3 new hires as well. We have Cara Diana, who's gonna be a kindergarten teacher, as Craig pointed out already. We have Kristen Hartshorn. Kristen actually has been working in our building for 2 years now as a long-term substitute for various positions, and has done a phenomenal job for us. We are very happy to have her on our 3rd grade team. And then we have Kelly Manning as well, coming in as our Title 1 Tutor. So, very, very excited about the new hires and the potential that they can bring to Canfield schools.
Thank you. We are also, as a board, very excited for you, and wish you all the best in your new job, and it's quite a place, Canfield, if you haven't been here. It's very special, and you're part of a family, and I want you to know that. If they don't treat you like family, come see us.
Would like to highlight just the importance of the levy passage in November. Because of that, we're able to offer all-day, everyday kindergarten throughout the district. That's the reason why we're able to bring these quality staff members aboard, and have now 4 full-time kindergartens at each of our elementary schools, so that's very important. Another positive with Title 1 funding, we're gonna be able to bring not only Kelly but Cindy on to do those positions through title services. So, again, not tapping into that general fund, being able to bring intervention to our youngsters to drive instruction, again, to help out, so, wanted to highlight that as well. Like to also recommend for reassignment, transfer, a classified employee, Gail DeMilo from part-time Special Services Aid at Hilltop to full-time Special Services Aid. Building yet to be determined, depending upon the need.
We don't need a motion to approve that, do we?
We do not, we do not. Like to approve the substitutes, Tammy Kandai, that's a substitute driver, that's your Exhibit 2A, and Christine Thorley, that's your substitute driver, again, Exhibit 2B. So recommend to hire them as substitutes.
Do I hear a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent for these hires?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Again, we would never bring individuals that didn't have certification in front of you, and those 2 individuals do. Like to recommend an extensive list for extended time, that's your Exhibit Number 3, and we would like to recommend those as a whole.
Do you want to read that, or...
No.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve the extended time, as in Exhibit 3?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Again, we would never bring individuals that didn't have certification in front of you, and those 2 individuals do. Like to recommend an extensive list for extended time, that's your Exhibit Number 3, and we would like to recommend those as a whole.
Do you want to read that, or...
No.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve the extended time, as in Exhibit 3?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Like to accept the resignation of classified employee Diana Hidu, Hilltop kindergarten aide, effective the end of 2013-14 school year. That's your Exhibit 0A.
0A, I've never seen that.
That's a first.
That's a first, yes. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Second.
I don't bear to...
Is Mary down there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Any discussion?
I know that she will be missed, and her boys were tremendous assets to our wrestling team at high school, so I wish them all well.
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. Again, like to thank her for her time and all of her expertise she brought to the building every day. Appreciate all of those years. Like to recommend approval request of out-of-state overnight field trips. First, varsity volleyball, to travel to Tiffin University in Tiffin, Ohio, July 10 through the 12th of '14, in order to participate in a volleyball camp, providing lodging and transportation are paid for by an outside source, that's your Exhibit 6A. And girls' middle school basketball, to travel to Sherrettsville, Ohio, July 6 through the 8th of '14, in order to participate in a basketball camp, providing lodging is paid for by an outside source, that's your Exhibit 6B.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve these 2 field trips?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? As I always ask, all the Ts and Is are there, right?
And it's the same answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We worry about kids going away. I want to make sure that everything is correct and above board. Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Like to recommend the approval of the 5-year forecast update, that's your Exhibit Number 7, and I'm sure we'll have some discussion afterwards.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve the 5-year forecast?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Oh, yes. You want to just give us a summary? My eyes have been crossing looking at this. Could you make them a little bigger?
I did on the second page. You can go for...
No, I saw it.
Okay. Just a couple comments. The, none of the negotiated, or none of the contracts have been negotiated with any of the staff yet as of the preparation of this, so those increases or costs of those contracts are not reflected in this forecast. However, the new levy is, and the first line item, the general property tax line item, and then the homestead portion of that is also reflected in the property tax allocation line, 1.05. So part of it's in the first, and part of it's in the fourth line down. So that new 3.3 million levy that was passed last November is included on this. Also, the other major revenue line item, the state, which you'll see, that's $6.2 million, I have no increase shown across the whole 5 years for that. We are on the guarantee, we have been on the guarantee for years, and don't expect any increases there at this point. Down below, personal services, which are salaries, which 85 percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. The only increases that are shown there are step increases for people moving on the salary schedule at this point. Not much really included on the capital outlay line item, as we are doing all our major equipment purchases out of the PI fund. And as you'll notice, the bottom cash balance line item is very healthy all the way across, as it should be after the passage of a new levy, so, thank the community for that.
Anything else?
Oh, I did want to state, the new kindergarten teachers and the additional bus drivers that we need to carry out the promises from the levy are included in the forecast.
How do you handle, like, the buses that we purchase? How do you handle the depreciation? Is it in here, or part of the PI?
The buses were purchased through school improvement notes, and it's all handled outside of the general fund, but we do depreciate those on our GAAP financial statements.
Would you explain to our audience, PI fund, and how it's gotten, how we get that?
We have 1 mill that's allocated to the Permanent Improvement Fund, and that brings in about $550,000 a year, and we use that to do paving projects, roofing projects, purchase capital outlays such as buses, computers.
Anything that'll last 5 years or more?
That'll last 5 years or more, and cannot be used for personal services, no salaries or benefits are approved for that part.
In this 5-year forecast, you just do this because you like to?
I love it. Required twice a year.
Twice a year.
May and October, so...
It's kind of a crapshoot, isn't it?
Well, it is, and the day after you prepare it, there's already changes that you become aware of, that it's the best, with the information you have at the time.
Without having, you know, some of the documentation to look back, how much change was there between the original projections, say, for '11, '12, '13, and the actual?
Well, there's always significant changes, as you know, even in your home budget, but with this one especially, the revenue changed significantly from the passage of the new levy, so...
Anything else? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Bova, if we could, before we move on, I'd like to, I think we could let some people...
If we don't mind, maybe we approve the next one, and then we give it, just in case there's any questions to the handbooks for our principals that are in attendance tonight. It's a good idea.
Do you think teacher, new teachers would really want to leave?
I, you know...
They've got, they're already chew and chawing at the bit to get home and start them lesson plans for next year.
Some webinars are gonna want to look at.
Cool.
Recommend for approval, Student Parent Handbooks. Canfield High School, that's your Exhibit 8A. Canfield Village Middle School, Exhibit 8B. Hilltop Elementary, Exhibit 8C, 8C, and CH Campbell Elementary, Exhibit 8D.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve the Student Parent Handbooks?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I have one question for all you guys back there. There's only 2 of you, but there's 3 of you. Is there consistency between these handbooks, from 1 group to the next, to the next, so that we're not doing 1 thing in 1 school, and going to the middle school and they have different things, going to the high school and having something else? And also, is there consistency with how we deal with infractions?
I don't want to step on your toes, so I'll defer to you then.
As far as the 2 elementary handbooks are concerned, they are identical in every way, with the exception of any place that it says "Hilltop" is replaced by "CH Campbell," as well as any other...
Actually, I'm talking about...
Any other minor issues. When it comes to a lot of our policies that we were putting in there, we actually took the language directly from the other handbooks, high school handbook, middle school handbook, just to provide that consistency. We've had the same discussions regarding grading scales, to try and keep that all in line as well. So, and then we have general conversations regarding how we handle day-to-day discipline with infractions as they come up.
Great.
Same attendance, before we put ours together, made sure that I was doing what the elementary, the high school was doing.
the high school was doing. Electronic devices policy, we had a lengthy discussion as an administrative team with Alex because we feel overall that there's a maturity level with kids being allowed to have cellphone use at the high school, for example, versus a fifth grader. So, middle school, that's going to be a little bit different than it was last year just because of some of the infractions that we found learning the hard way. But that was a conscious decision that we talked about as a team that we thought was, what was best.
So, fifth graders would have more use because they're better at controlling themselves at high school, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't allow them to use their devices during the school day. So there is some difference at those levels. On, on certain policies, they're going specific, but there is consistency throughout.
That's great. I really appreciate that. I know the board appreciates that.
You know, what's interesting with handbooks is it's a living document. You're forever adapting and changing and dealing with issues. And at, throughout the year, you're always highlighting and making adjustments so that you anticipate a change for the following year. And that's what these folks do. It's, it's regularly, we talk about that at cabinet meetings, monthly, that, you know, consistency's key. We talk about alignment in curriculum. We need alignment in offices too. So, that's, that's forever unknown.
And the reason I asked that is because I sat in your seats and had to deal with student-parent guides, and there was not a real consistency between different levels, and it caused real problems. And that's why I asked that question.
Are these available online or will be once they've been approved?
Mr. Bovin?
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser, upon your recommendation, I think it's fair time now if folks would like to leave.
Even the new teachers, huh?
Even the new.
Can I just clarify that you're not testing him right now? Yeah, I already answered that.
I'm not clarifying.
I see nobody moving.
Mike, you always said you'd never take the hat off.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Bye.
Thanks for both of that.
Barry.
You're welcome. Wow, a lot more oxygen. Is that why you did it?
I did it very good.
I'd like to recommend acceptance donations. That's your exhibit number nine.
That's a total.
That's a good question.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to accept nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It's amazing.
Roll call.
It's amazing. Again, that's something to support.
After one month, $28,000.
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser, one close.
Happy people. I'd like to recommend the approval of a 5% increase in medical insurance premiums.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to approve the 5% increase in medical insurance premiums?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Got to have a second, okay.
And we can have, we can have some discussion.
Discussion.
Definitely. As we all know, we're part of a consortium, Mahoning County Consortium, that has many school systems and educational service center involved. We, we look at trend, we take a look at what's recommended to make sure that we have a cash balance to take care of, insurance claims. And it was recommended and approved this morning at a general assembly meeting that we need to increase the amount of insurance premiums by 5%. Again, to maintain a good cash balance on hand to take care of claims. Again, this is, again, part of the consortium, not our district.
Does the consortium place us out for bid against, you know, multiple, or two multiple companies?
We actually asked for six. We went out and reached out to six different companies this past spring. We received quotes from four different ones. It's very interesting that the same company, Medical Mutual of Ohio, received the bid, but at a much better rate for our employees. So sometimes that happens, that the same person that has the business, as long as they know that there's, that we're going out for bid, that they'll come back with even a better quote. So, and that's what happened.
Have some of the provisions for, for, my lack of recollection, the Obamacare situation started to affect these?
I wouldn't say a great deal at this point. What, what's affecting, what has been the large discussion in these sessions is wellness. In promoting folks to go get screened and to check and to try to, to deal with issues at an initial level instead of waiting to try to react to symptoms. Let's promote wellness. Let's promote getting service early. And that's where we're seeing a lot of initiatives really coming forward at this point. And that's what we're going to stress to our staff for this year.
Patty, before I got on the board, we had a large payment we had to make. Was this the same thing?
The assessment?
Yeah. Why, why did we have that assessment? Because we had a lot of illness?
We have more experience for our district as in relation to the rest of the consortium.
I see. So they can assess you more.
There's a three-year window, holdback period, and they can assess you, as well as award you a premium holiday if you do well. So, that is changing. This is the last three-year window this year.
How are we doing?
Changing how? Or changing the window?
They're getting rid of that whole.
Concept?
Concept, though. It's going to be true consortium.
So nobody will be.
Nobody will be penalized.
Penalized or rewarded.
Oh, great.
Any other discussion?
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend adoption of the temporary appropriation measure certificate. That's your exhibit number 10.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 146-2014? I'm sorry.
Temporary appropriation.
Temporary appropriation measure certificate, exhibit 10.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
This does what for us, Mrs. Kessler?
It allows us to start spending money July 1 prior to adoption of final appropriations in September. It's just a portion, I mean, it's just a portion of the total appropriation measure that should be done in September.
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Did we do the resolution already?
Waiver day now.
Okay. Adopt the resolution number 146-214 in support of one waiver day in this 14-15 school year. That's your exhibit number 11.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 146-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
If you remember, we had a few waiver days last year. We decided this year that we're going to utilize one waiver day after Thanksgiving there, December 1st, to bring folks in for in-servicing. The other waiver days that we were normally utilizing, and we'll see that on a new calendar of adoption here later on, we're going to use those as student-work days. They're going to, students are going to come in and it's going to be on task for students. So less in-servicing going on during the school year, more time on task for students. So we're down to one waiver day.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
I could recommend the approve, the amend, approve amended 2014-15 school year school calendar, exhibit number 12.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to approve the amended 2014-15 school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, when did this, what's the seniors' last day, do you know? It doesn't say it on there.
Yeah, it's, it's always, it's always that week. Fourth, third or fourth.
Okay.
I'll highlight a couple of the changes there. I don't like bringing you calendars for revision, but this is necessary at this point. One is because of the waiver day going to more student workdays. Secondly, if you notice, President's Day in February, we usually have a four-day weekend there for not only students but staff. That is actually going to be a teacher workday. Students still have off, but teachers will be in for a workday there. So, less time away from kids. That's normally, normally scheduled student day off. So that's going to be a teacher workday that day.
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the approval of grant program applications. Title 2A in 14 and 15 at $41 million, excuse me, $41,917.37. Prior year was $39,000 plus IDEA, $494,914.99. It was right around $512,000 last year. And Title 1, $268,697.17. Last year was just over $251,000.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to approve the grant program applications?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
They got a little excited there when you said $41 million. I thought there were good, big things coming.
I thought there were good things coming from the state and feds, yeah.
Why do these vary from year to year?
I guess maybe you can say there's a bucket of money and it's shared depending upon need. And we don't get to say need. The state and feds get to say need. And if you take a look at what need other districts have compared to ours, we still have youngsters with need, staff with need, but they view us a little different than possibly a less economically advantaged district might need. Not that the kids don't need it, but they're looking at us saying that your district might not need it the same. So, it fluctuates.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the approval of Mahoning County Educational Service Center contract for fiscal year 15. It's $797,000 and $759,000.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve Mahoning County Educational Service Center contract?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yes. You have spoken before about looking at some of the services that we pay for through the Educational Service Center and with the possibility of bringing them back in-house. Did you look at that this year and what did you conclude?
One area we definitely, and we will have a press release out on this very soon. We talked about it. It's finalized. We are going to have preschool in each of our elementary schools. So instead of, they are still going to be run by county units, but we are going to house them in-house for our kids. So our kids will be educated in our buildings. They will then have their primary education carried out for. So, that, that's one area.
Now, the preschoolers would be for Camfield School District students?
Only, only.
Is there, are there any?
There are limitations. There are limitations. First off, we have to offer it to those students with special needs, and those are, those are definitely going to be serviced. It's going to be an AM, PM type of, an environment for those youngsters, Monday through Thursday. And then, for as many special needs youngsters that might not be working at grade level, there's also going to be quote-unquote "average-developed" youngsters in the same classes being educated with those youngsters as well. So, limitations. Right now, we have about 16 special needs students at each building, which means we'll have at least that amount to be able to service for those, again, atypical youngsters as well. That's one area. Another area that we've talked about was curriculum and instruction. Having a director of curriculum and instruction now, we could possibly be bringing some of those services back in-house and utilizing our staff for that as well. We're going to take a look at that and see if we're going to be able to accommodate our, our staff needs that way.
Can you provide somewhere along the line of any kind of a breakdown of how we get to that number?
Yeah, I have it.
Do we have it?
I don't know if it was caught, was it copied?
Was it in your packet? If it's not in your packet, we can.
Just the summary sheet was included.
I'm just wondering how you arrive at that.
The largest items are that preschool, there's occupational therapy, the speech therapy, curriculum, staff development are the four major items.
Now, by approving this, are we restricting ourselves to bringing anything in before the end of the 14-15 school year?
You mean, we.
In other words, is this a maximum expenditure?
That, we're anticipating that to be the maximum, yes, just to be budgeted. We can adjust that figure, and we can be paid back.
And how do you, you know, how do you plan on doing that through your, your administrators or?
Yeah, we have administrative team meetings monthly to evaluate on how we're getting, having our staff serviced and our students serviced. The thing that we look at also, we, we have some special needs that can't be serviced in-house. It, it could be a youngster that the typical school day is, is not conducive to what their needs are, and we have to service them elsewhere in a different unit outside of the district. We do a pretty decent job. And if you take a look at other districts when it comes to ED placements or MD placements, multiple disabilities, we do a lot in-house. A lot of other districts do funnel those youngsters outside of the school system. We've got some quality staff that we're able to handle that in-house, and we're there very thankful to be able to, to keep those youngsters here.
That's good for the kids, too.
It's good for the kids, it's good for the family, it's good for everyone. Not only the, the youngsters that need the service, but also, again, our, I hate to say it this way, but our average-developed youngsters gain a lot of working with those students as well.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
I'd like to highlight if you think that's going on in the district, if you don't mind?
It would be a pleasure to hear your voice.
Okay, we have, we have driveway patchwork going on, as you can tell, along with ceiling. Ceiling work that's going to be happening later on in the summertime, so that's, that's been going on actually even prior to graduation, so we're, we're excited about that. It's just our driveways throughout the district has, I hate to say it, but it's been neglected. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to catch up. And we're very, very fortunate to have that permanent improvement levy to, to help support that. Water fountains, we have several water fountains in the district that weren't working, that were broken, that were probably back when some of the buildings were actually, rose and, and actually were built. So those water fountains are being replaced by, again, our own staff. We're very fortunate to have custodial staff that experienced to do that, that type of work. High school staff, we mentioned earlier on, technology upgrades. They were able to receive computers. We had a lot of high school staff that were actually bringing their own computers in to not only do their paperwork, their grading, to create documents, but were actually even taking attendance on their own laptops and computers from home. Unacceptable. They were upgraded prior to the end of the school year, given new computers, and I know they're very fortunate and thankful that they had those. Third-grade reading guarantee, that has been in discussion throughout the state over the past several months. We have, we just got back some results for our third graders. We have none of our third graders that were not exempt from the third-grade reading guarantee needing to be retained. Every one of our third graders will be fourth graders next year unless they didn't meet the standards at third grade, our own standards. But the third-grade reading guarantee didn't affect us at all this year. We're very thankful. If you take a look at other districts, there's a lot of nervous folks wanting to know how they were going to deal with third graders that did not pass that third-grade reading test. So, we're very fortunate that way. And you might ask me, well, why, what makes a kid not being exempt from that? We have IEP youngsters. Those IEP youngsters that didn't reach a certain standard are still moved on because, again, they have special needs that they need to get out of that.
Can I make one comment on that?
Sure.
I was fortunate to help Mr. Maroney a little bit with his kindergarten teachers, and I know this, this was above and beyond, but they produced three different reading workbooks for the summer, weeks one through four, weeks five through eight, weeks nine through 12. Every one of the kindergartners got those three books. So they'll be working Every one of the kindergartners got those three books. So, they'll be working this summer to get them ready for first grade. Now, I know that was above and beyond what they did, but they're trying to help the kids get ready so when we hit the third grade. And I, I commend them. I know C.H. was involved in that, too, that all the teachers, you know, worked hard to give them some, some hands-on kind of stuff for the summer. Parents are always asking for it, and it's good that our staff steps up and does that for them, for the kids themselves. And one, one highlight I'd like to mention, we are going to have our first summer camp that we're going to offer. It's a STEM camp for those students entering fifth grade through eighth grade this year, and that's going to be at our high school. We ask youngsters to apply for that, and we had several applicants, and we're going through the stages of seeing who's available and who would be a good fit for that summer camp. And that's going to be a STEM camp at the high school again in August. I can't commend enough, this was, this is driven by students at the high school. We're going to have students at the high school work with our kids at the middle school level, along with parent volunteers. And we're very excited about starting a camp and looking at other camps we're going to be able to bring on board this summer. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Ask you a question?
Sure.
You made a all call at the end of the year about starting times, which, which I commend you because there was a lot of discussion about that. Have you gotten any closer to schedules and starting times, or where do you stand on that process?
Sure. The, the middle school's not going to change much at all. It might be about five minutes off from last year, so maybe about an 8:05 start. The, the elementary is not going to be much of a change. That is going to be last, just like it was this year. High school's going to be the largest change. And right now, we're looking at about between a thirty and forty-five minute earlier start time than they're used to have. A little bit of a concern there is those are the youngsters that, I should say, young adults, that are the ones that are usually working, having extracurricular activities after school, the ones that are out late, but then we're asking them to start first. But we feel it's the best fit for our community to still start high school first, middle school second, elementary third, and again, a three-route system. So, it'll be 9:12 on a route, 5:08 on a route, K for it. So, we don't have exact times. We're still finalizing that. We will publicize that in our annual report before the start of the school year.
Now, is that going to, now, obviously affect discussion we've had about a zero block, but would there still be the opportunity about a block five?
We've talked about that. Actually, we still can do a zero block, and we're going to blend it. So.
Does it have to be at four in the morning?
No, we're actually going to be able to offer work for youngsters to do at home and only come in, do once or twice a week in the morning to go over with a staff member. So, it's, it's going to be more blended, some work at home, some work.
What time would the high schools roughly get out?
Around 2:10, 2:15.
Could I ask Mr. Cooper how that might affect his jurisdiction over there?
We should probably wake him up first.
Well, that's okay.
We've discussed this briefly in the superintendent. It really already addressed probably the biggest concern would be events that extended to the evening and the effect on a school night the following day. The actual day of the events, that's not a major concern.
But does practice start at 2:10 now instead of 3:10?
Potentially, potentially. And that does give us some, some leeway to either have the practices go early or potentially to have maybe a mini study hall or work session before they actually start practicing. So, there, there's some flexibility there in that regard.
Thank you. Yep.
I have a question. Those third graders, how many times do they get to take that test if they fail?
Well, they take it in the fall. Now, they have a fall assessment, and then they take it in the spring this year. If they weren't to pass it to move on to fourth grade, they have a summer addition. And districts can actually have an alternate assessment that they can create to allow those youngsters to take it prior to fourth grade. I'm in, you know, depending upon who you talk to, I would anticipate a lot of multi-age classrooms going on in the state. If you're able to move on in other subject areas, the district can move you on to fourth grade, and it's recommend them to move you on to fourth grade, but make sure they're educating you on a third grade level in preparation to that achievement test. So, you can take it in the summer for advancement, and then you can take it in the fall again. So, there are, and then as soon as you pass it at a, at a rate that you should be for fourth grade, then they can move you on. So, you can be advanced in the fourth grade mid-year or maybe even a few months into the year for those, for those kids. But again, we're not, we're not affected at all this year.
I noticed on your calendar, it said OGT testing, and I've heard some, not heard some. They start, they stop. What's the current state provision on OGT versus SAT or end-of-course exams or all the?
If I had a definite answer for you, I'd give it to you today.
Okay.
Our kids are going to be tested more next year than any, any time in their life. There's going to be end-of-course exam conversation. There's going to be OGT. There's going to be OAA. There's going to be many different rigorous type of tests for our kids to take. I'm telling you, it seems like we're going to be testing more than we are educating.
And this does what for our kids?
Again, if I had a definite answer for you today, I'd give that to you.
Well, I look forward to your response in the future.
Well, I'm sure the state will tell us what we should say.
In their infinite wisdom, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Item 13 is other. We only have a few people here. Are there any questions of what we've done here tonight?
I have one comment, as you would expect. I was, I was just glancing through the bylaws and policies the other day, and I noticed that, that we kind of need to review some of those ourselves because the, the bylaw or the policy regarding class rank is now outdated, you know what I mean? And we, we probably need to at least have, Dr. Hey, can somebody bring us language? Because that's more of an internal thing.
It's more of an internal, but don't forget, if a, if a school and a college or someone really needs a class rank for scholarship or some issue, we can still get that for them. So, that's, that's still available.
Should that be amended?
It, it does need to be amended. It needs to be revisited, yes.
Okay. You recommend that we go into executive session?
Yes.
On the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Executive session for those few people remaining here is just us alone. We talk, it's to prepare for negotiation with public employees and to conference with an attorney concerning several disputes. So, thank you for coming.
Mr. Richards?